Welcome, everyone. I would like to invite Reverend Lee to come up to give our invocation. I saw him earlier.
(inaudible)
Oh, there he is. Okay. Thank you, Reverend Lee.
Let's pray. Father, we pause now to acknowledge you as the keeper of our city. The psalmist reminds us that without you keeping our city, those who watch for our city do so in vain. We come tonight to first honor you and to invoke your presence. I pray for each commissioner tonight. I pray for this meeting. I pray, Father, that this meeting will be done decently and in order. I pray for the new recruits tonight. I thank you, God, for all that's present tonight. I pray that these commissioners, they will, as they govern, that they will do so as the servants of the Lord, understanding that you've given them the ability. They've now been given the responsibility and remind them that one day they will give an accountability for their services. How we thank you now for what you are about to do in this place and in this city and for the good of your people. Amen.
Reverend Lee, then I'd like to invite Jeff LaFleur and his son Aaron LaFleur. He is a local Boy Scout earning his communications merit badge. And so part of that is being a part of a public meeting. And so I invited them to lead us in the pledge. So if you want to pull that microphone towards you, and we will take your lead. We'll start saying the pledge after you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(coughing) Call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Want to welcome our newest Bowling Green City Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, who will be sitting on my left, and welcome you to the meeting and hope you jump right in and get your feet wet with the rest of us. So glad to have you here. We have a public hearing as the first item that we need to take care of. And the purpose of this public hearing is to obtain citizens' views of housing, fair housing, and community development needs in Bowling Green, development of proposed activities, and a review of past program performance for the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan Year 16 through '20 and Year 16 Annual Action Plan. And I believe Mr. Childers, or excuse me, Mr. Cook's going to be doing our presentation tonight?
Welcome, everyone. I would like to invite Reverend Lee to come up to give our invocation. I saw him earlier. Oh, there he is. Okay. Thank you, Reverend Lee.
Let's pray. Father, we pause now to acknowledge you as the keeper of our city. The psalmist reminds us that without you keeping our city, those who watch for our city do so in vain. We come tonight to first honor you and to invoke your presence. I pray for each commissioner tonight. I pray for this meeting. I pray, Father, that this meeting will be done decently and in order. I pray for the new recruits tonight. I thank you, God, for all that's present tonight. I pray that these commissioners, they will, as they govern, that they will do so as the servants of the Lord, understanding that you've given them the ability. They've now been given the responsibility and remind them that one day they will give an accountability for their services. How we thank you now for what you are about to do in this place and in this city and for the good of your people. Amen.
Reverend Lee, then I'd like to invite Jeff LaFleur and his son Aaron LaFleur. He is a local Boy Scout earning his Communications Merit Badge. And so part of that is being a part of a public meeting. And so I invited them to lead us in the pledge. So if you want to pull that microphone towards you, and we will take your lead. We'll start saying the pledge after you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(coughing) Call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson. Want to welcome our newest Bowling Green City Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, who will be sitting on my left, and welcome you to the meeting and hope you jump right in and get your feet wet with the rest of us. So glad to have you here. We have a public hearing as the first item that we need to take care of. And the purpose of this public hearing is to obtain citizens' views of housing, fair housing, and community development needs in Bowling Green, development of proposed activities, and a review of past program performance for the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan Year 16 through '20 and Year 16 Annual Action Plan. And I believe Mr. Childers, or excuse me, Mr. Cook's going to be doing our presentation tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. The city's Neighborhood and Community Services Department is currently in the process of developing the five-year consolidated plan for years '16 through '20 and the Annual Action Plan for year '16 of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. As part of this process, we invite the public to share their views on the community development and housing needs in the city. I will give a brief overview of the CDBG program, and then we'll open up at the end for public comment. Before I forget, I have some sign-in sheets going around the room. So if everyone could please sign in, I would appreciate it. Oh, boy. Oh, there we go. So after the 2000 census, the city received the designation of an urbanized area, which means we had a population of 50,000 or greater. This gave the city the opportunity to start receiving annual funding each year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to address community development and housing issues. For the last 15 years, we have received approximately $500,000 to $600,000 each year. Each, our allocation each year is based off of a formula. The factors are population, poverty, age of housing, growth lag, and overcrowding. So we have a lot of federal regulations that we have to deal with with the CDBG program. Probably the most important of those is all of our funded activities have to meet at least one of three national objectives. The first and most popular is at least 51% of the people served by the activity must be of low to moderate income. Low to moderate income is a HUD term that basically means that the persons are at 80% or below the area median income. The second national objective is prevention or elimination of slum and blight. And then the final one is urgent community need, which must be tied to a presidentially declared disaster. So in regards to the planning process, every five years, we have to create a consolidated plan. This is developed through a lot of data analysis and citizen participation. This consolidated plan identifies our priority needs for spending funds. And then each year of our consolidated plan, we have an annual action plan, which identifies specific projects for funding to address these priority needs. So this is a breakdown of our current year process. We start off with an initial public comment period, which we are in the middle of right now. It started January 1st and ends January 30th. Of course, we're having our public hearing here tonight. After this public comment period, we will start drafting both plans. And we will have a resident and stakeholder meeting series, really in two separate settings. Number one, we are having a housing needs assessment and market analysis done for our consolidated plan. So as part of that, we will have stakeholder meetings with a large variety of groups in the community, ranging from public housing service providers all the way over to workforce and economic development entities. And then also as part of this market analysis, we will have a resident survey available online for all of our local residents to be able to share their input on the housing needs of the community. The other setting where we'll be having these meetings is as part of our next neighborhood of focus in the Neighborhood Improvements Program. We will be having a public meeting where all neighborhood residents will have the opportunity to share their input on their neighborhood and what opportunities they see for improvements. We will also have stakeholder meetings as part of that process as well. Once we get done with drafting the plans and having these meetings, we will have a second public comment period, which is scheduled for April 1st through April 30th. During that time, we will have another public hearing to present the plans to the Board of Commissioners at the April 17th meeting. After that, we'll go through a series of approvals. The plans will be brought before our Board of Commissioners at their May 7th meeting. After that, it will be submitted to the HUD Local Field Office for their approval, which we expect to receive by July 1st. While we're waiting on HUD's approval, we'll be going through an environmental review process for each of our funded activities. And shortly after, we will begin implementation of our annual action plan. This is a list of sample eligible activities. Property acquisition for any public purpose, public facilities or improvements. This could be new sidewalks or park improvements, clearance activities. This is going to be more related to removal of slum blight. Public services, relocation assistance, rehabilitation is typically going to be associated with housing, homeownership assistance, economic development, which is going to be tied to job creation and administrative costs for the oversight of the program. So this is a list of activities that we cannot undertake with CDBG funds. Buildings for general conduct of government, general government expenses, political activities, new housing construction, income payments, purchase of equipment, operating and maintenance expenses, and assistance to professional sports teams. So this is a pie graph of our annual funding allocations. You can see where 20% of our funding went towards administration and fair housing activities. And then the remaining 80% has gone to neighborhood improvements in the Bowling Green reinvestment area. This is a six census tract area that makes up our lowest incomes, oldest housing stock, and highest concentration of minorities in comparison to the rest of the city as a whole. As part of our Neighborhood Improvements Program, we select one neighborhood at a time, and we make long-term improvements tailored to the specific needs of that individual neighborhood to create a better residential environment, improve economic opportunities, and address housing issues. The Bowling Green reinvestment area was designated by HUD as a neighborhood revitalization strategy area. Wanted to share some previously funded activities. We've had a couple residential rehab programs in the past. One was a homeowner rehab, and then the other was rental conversion with Live the Dream Development. With Live the Dream, what they would do is they would acquire rental properties or properties at risk of becoming rental properties. They would rehabilitate them and then sell them to low to moderate income families for affordable homeownership. This is a before and after picture on one of the projects that we partnered with Live the Dream on. Also wanted to share a couple of projects we're working on in our Neighborhood Improvements Program in Census Tract 112. Last year, the city allocated $500,000 to Habitat for Humanity to install 1,000 linear feet of new infrastructure, which will result in the construction of 22 new houses that will be sold to low to moderate income families for affordable homeownership. This picture on the left is actually from a prior Habitat project that the city partnered with them on at Durbin Estates. This picture on the right is another project that we completed last year under our NIP program, where we installed 6,000 linear feet of new walking paths at Lampkin Park. This project not only connects parkgoers to amenities within the park, but also connects the adjacent neighborhood to and through the park to access necessary services in the Morgantown Road and Russellville Road areas. The last project I wanted to share with you all is a Normal View Drive realignment project. These are some before and after pictures. You can see the picture on the left, the stretch of Normal View Drive that extends through Petticoe Park. Used to be separated by a narrow median of telephone poles and grass. This was awkward for motorists to get through the park. It was also difficult for our fire trucks to get through when responding to calls. So what you can see in the picture on the right, what we ended up doing was shifting the road over in the direction of the park, basically making it one single lane, or single two-lane road, which has improved accessibility and safety through the park. It has also, side benefit has created more parking area for the residents impacted by the project. As you can see before, their parking was very limited. I wanted to share our next neighborhood of focus in our Neighborhood Improvements Program. This is Census Block Groups 103.3 and 103.4. This is going to be the area located in between Morgantown Road, Old Morgantown Road, University Drive, and a small part of Russellville Road. In addition to the neighborhood meetings I mentioned earlier, we will also have two cross-departmental teams of city staff members taking tours of the neighborhood and making observations and recommendations for improvements. So our anticipated funding levels for FY '20 is $542,000. We don't know what this amount's going to be, probably until sometime this spring. This is just a good guess based off of our prior five-year funding average. So that concludes the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to submit written comments can send them to me by January 30th to Nick Cook, Grants Coordinator, P.O. Box 430, Bowling Green, Kentucky 42102, or they may be emailed to ncs.info@bgkyle.org. At this time, we'll open up for public comments.
This opportunity for anyone that has a comment to make for us to consider with regard to the Community Development Block Grant Program, this would be your opportunity to speak. If you would, step forward and give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Morland, and I believe the block grant is good, improving housing. But what we need to do is put money in life skills because the government shutdown is going to affect Section 8 and stuff. So what we need to do is put money in life skills because that program is the one that is helping this area. And the reason why is because what they do is they help people. They don't give money out. What they do is actually, in about a year, they change the amount of the rent. So they give people a chance to afford the rent. So it's a good program, life skills. And I'm not sure if this is the place I'm supposed to speak or not because Dana, I just don't know. But I just don't know. Is this the place to speak about life skills? Because the grant, no? Oh. Well, I thought it was. What is this about?
Community Development Block Grant Programs on the targeted areas on the west side of town.
Okay, so that means... Okay.
May I help clarify for her? May I help clarify? So if you want to talk about some things that you think life skills could do to help with affordable housing or making housing more affordable for folks, then absolutely, this is a great time to talk about how life skills is a good program that could be funded with CDBG funds.
Yeah, and I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. And the mayor said no, but I don't know. But life skills is a really good program. And it's, it's going to help people in this area, you know? And what we need to do is put in programs that's not going to affect the government shutdown. So life skills would be the perfect one. So, and I'm doing this because the power of God. Because he's the awesome God is.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Good evening. I am Rondell Miller, and I am a resident in Warren County, but I work here in the city limits of Bowling Green. I have a letter that I would like to share with the commission this evening that will be filed with the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services. I do want to also thank the mayor and city commissioners, as well as staff of the city of Bowling Green, that have sought to learn directly from people over the past year and couple of years, from people who are experiencing homelessness and also living in poverty, and also have sought to learn more from organizations that are serving also people who are living in poverty and experiencing homelessness. Over the past six years, I've had the privilege of working with community partners, such as the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services, on avenues of housing and fair housing within the current consolidated plan. We have met to develop solutions and plans for the future of housing opportunities here in Bowling Green, and we have worked together to identify how collaboration of services can help better serve the community at large. As the director of Hotel Inc., I have seen firsthand the impact lack of affordable housing, substandard housing, and unfair housing practice has taken on the citizens of Bowling Green. In 2018, in our organization, we saw the average length of homelessness increase from 147 days in 2017 to 216 days. This was due in part to lack of available housing choice vouchers, new rules for the housing preference list point system within NCS, and lack of availability at the Housing Authority of Bowling Green, as well as other income-based housing. People who have traditionally been able to move from subsidized housing to unsubsidized housing did not do so at the same rate in 2018 as has taken place in previous years. For households receiving services at Hotel Inc. and our community partners, we've seen a loss in affordable housing due to increased rental prices that far exceed 30% of the average person's bring-home pay. Bowling Green Daily News published an article on December 9, 2018, that stated 45% of Bowling Green renters are rent burdened. This means an estimated 15,800 renters are paying more than 30% of their net income and rental cost, making their households unstable and at risk of homelessness, as well as not able to meet basic needs such as food, transportation, childcare, and medical care. Ann Bowman, Communications Director at the Kentucky Center for Economic Policy, stated a two-adult, two-child household would need an annual income of $77,000 to securely cover housing, transportation, taxes, food, and childcare. The median income in Bowling Green, according to the 2017 census, is $39,901. One solution to the crisis of affordable housing would be the development of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Over 10 years ago, both Louisville and Lexington saw the need for the creation of such funds. This allows grants to be distributed to nonprofit and for-profit companies to build, restore, and modify existing properties to include affordable housing. Such a plan foster collaboration and coordination among local government, for-profit businesses, and nonprofit organizations. A second solution would be to create transition models for working-age households that do not include senior citizens or persons with disabilities to move from subsidized housing within five years, allowing rent to increase in increments over time until reaching fair market rent for one year before the household is required to move out. This could include a person-centered aftercare plan that social workers or housing navigators could facilitate by helping to develop housing and income goals to be achieved during this timeframe. This solution would allow households to build good credit history and potentially move into homeownership. Substandard housing and unfair housing practices add to the daily strain for some low-income-earning residents. We have encouraged people to report substandard housing issues to code enforcement. These reports have included broken windows, lack of heat or hot water, sewer backing up in their home, and other issues. Often, this is met with fear and trepidation due to no protection for the tenant if code enforcement finds the unit to be uninhabitable. We have also obtained lease agreements that state rent must be paid in cash by noon or eviction is at 5:00 p.m. on the same day. Or tenant is responsible for all aspects of the unit, including roof, water lines from the road to the house, and HVAC system. Or the lack of maximum amount of late fees that can be added for late rental payment. We have worked with senior citizens who have been evicted and became street homeless on the grounds of the wrong color mulch or being a nosey neighbor. We have listened as people have chosen the apartment unit they are interested in only to be steered by the property manager to a different part of town based on their race. These practices should not be tolerated or allowed in a city that takes pride in being the fastest-growing city in the state of Kentucky. A solution to this could be required annual inspections with timely follow-up on substandard issues found on all rental units, not just subsidized. Education for landlords and tenants on federal, state, and local housing laws and codes will help mitigate unfair housing practices as well. I do greatly appreciate the time and effort put forth by the staff of the Neighborhood and Community Service Department and the Bowling Green City Commission to educate themselves on these issues, as well as working on solutions to make Bowling Green a better place to live and work for all of us. Thank you.
Rondell, we appreciate it. Would there be anybody else that have any public comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir.
Don Langley. I live at 714 Eastwood Street. Mayor, city commissioners, city employees, everyone in attendance. We've got a lot of housing development in Bowling Green, apartments, strip malls. And affordable housing has always been on the minds of citizens of Bowling Green for as long as I can remember. And I think with these projects that's going on as far as apartment buildings and strip malls, a certain percentage of that money that is paid into the city should be allotted for public housing. And that money should be taken in whatever needs that we need to determine and go into a public housing fund. And so the citizens that are needing public housing and the homeless and other factors of our society that can't afford some of the rents that's being charged will have a fund to go to to help them out. Thank you.
Don, Mayor.
Don, what monies, excuse me, are you talking about that we would be receiving from builders or so on? What monies are you talking about?
Well, any money that a builder comes in here and he has to put down to start a project for permits or anything to have to do with that development, a certain percentage of that money should go into a fund for affordable housing, which could make a big difference in the affordable housing rules that we have now and have had in the past. We need programs to help the people that are looking for affordable rents. I checked on these places downtown by the steamer, these new apartments. One bedroom down there, by the time you pay all the fees and everything, is $1,000 a month. And no one can afford that that are looking for affordable housing. So the downtown area is just becoming a rich man's paradise. So I think an apartment building that's coming in, there are a lot of fees that the city charges, taxes, that need to go to affordable housing.
Appreciate it. Would there be anyone else that needed to make a public comment with regard to Community Development Block Grant Funds? This is your opportunity.
Can I just want to ask something, Nick, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Nick. If funds in this where a homeowner in the designated area needs money for renovation of that property, they live there. Can they get funds in order to do that? Roof is leaking, leaking bad. Can they get money from these funds in order to do that?
Yes. Previously, with our Community Development Block Grant Programs, we have had homeowner rehabilitation programs. We also currently, as part of our Neighborhood Improvements Program, have an exterior property renovation program where we award grants to property owners to make exterior improvements, which could be new roofing, new windows, siding, doors, things of that nature as well.
So we are going to let the citizens know that when we meet with them pertaining to this documentation?
Yes, whenever we have programs available, such as Exterior Property Improvements Program or Homeowner Rehab Programs, we do have public outreach to make the citizens aware.
You're saying when we have? I'm asking, do we have monies right now where a homeowner that lives in the house that needs repairs can get funds?
Yes, currently, the city has a contract with Live the Dream Development, who is actually overseeing this exterior property improvement program. The city awarded... this Exterior Property Improvement Program. The city awarded $250,000 to Live the Dream, which is subject to a renewal for additional $250,000. And Live the Dream has been making property owners aware in Census Track 112 of this program.
Else? Thank you, Ms. Cook.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Knutke. So I just want to make sure I understand the timeline of it. So the Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan, but then the Neighborhood Improvement Plan isn't, is just for a couple of years, and there's going to be, we'll move to another census tract for the remaining? Is that correct? Or is this Neighborhood Improvement Program and the census tracts you mentioned tonight is for the entire five years?
So the Neighborhood Improvements Program is a long-term strategy in the Bowling Green Reinvestment Area. The Bowling Green Reinvestment Area is a large area, six census tracts. So we select one neighborhood at a time, and we will spend a year, two years, maybe three years, depending on however long it takes to make those tailored improvements to that neighborhood, and then we will move to the next neighborhood of focus.
So the public comments this evening are not just for these particular tracts that we are talking about that you're moving to next, but just in general, over the next five years, what does our city need to do to impact affordable housing? Is that correct?
Absolutely. So the Consolidated Plan public comments will aid us in setting the priorities for the plan. To give you an example, our current priorities are affordable housing, economic opportunity, and neighborhood improvements as part of our prior Consolidated Plan. So this Consolidated Plan will help us establish those new priorities for the next five years, and then we will address those priorities each year with the Annual Action Plan and our Neighborhood Improvements Program.
So then the general public can give comments and send those to you in writing or via email till January 30th. But then folks who live in the particular census tract who we're going to focus on in the next Neighborhood Improvement Program for the next two years, they're going to have additional opportunity to give input. And you had mentioned folks in the neighborhood and also stakeholders. So would you mind explaining to me what is a stakeholder in a census tract? And how do you reach out to the neighbors in that neighborhood so that they can be informed and know about the public meeting you'll have with them?
Sure. So as part of that public meeting we have, where every resident is invited and every property owner, we send a postcard out to every address. We will also advertise in the media. And then we will, as far as the stakeholder meetings go, this could be long-term residents of the neighborhood. It could be pastors of churches, long-term business owners, folks like that to gain their input as well.
Just as a matter, this is kind of related, the Opportunity Zones are focused in this area as well. As I understand, on Friday, there's a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce that will help business owners explain what that is. I think it's at 10 o'clock. Is that correct?
Yes. So the U.S. Department of Treasury designated Census Track 102 as an Opportunity Zone. That's located in the Bowling Green Reinvestment Area. So that will also encourage additional investment into this area of town. And the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet will be having a workshop on Friday at 10 o'clock at the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce to talk more about the Opportunity Zone. And then Neighborhood and Community Services is looking at having some type of workshop over the next couple of months to talk about the Opportunity Zone more in depth, along with our Brownfield Assessment Program for the Bowling Green Reinvestment Area.
Comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Only one, Mayor, and that is that people can submit comments via email, both before tonight, leading up to the hearing, and then after the hearing. And I, all of us received an email, but I wanted to make sure that Rodney Goodman's email was, in fact, accepted into the public comments.
Yes, we've received those comments, and they will be taken into consideration as we develop the plan.
Thank you. I think we will close this public hearing and move to awards of recognitions. Mr. Maslow, do you have anything tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
And a member of the commission? I just pulled up one item, and since she's here tonight, one of our police officers made the cover of the Kentucky Justice Cabinet's Law Enforcement Magazine, and Penny is here with us tonight. Congratulations. Actually got her honor. Do you have any comments, Mr. Maslow?
I do not.
Who is this?
Great picture.
Good picture. How come we don't get this magazine? How come you're the only one gets this magazine?
I was a police officer.
Says honor.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's move on. First item we have is the approval of minutes from our December 18, 2018, meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, as a matter of course, to make our city attorney happy, the record should reflect that the city of Bowling Green reaffirms the appointments of Mayor Pro Tim Superigin, the following commission appointments, which were approved at the December 18 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Superigin, the Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority. Dana Beasley Brown, the Barren River District Health Department and Job Development Incentive Program Committee. Joe Dinning to the Bowling Green Audit Committee and Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee. Brian Slim Nash to the Bowling Green Warren County Drug Task Force, Housing Authority Bowling Green, and Job Development Incentive Program Committee. And me to the BGMU Board. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First item is the second reading of ordinance BG 2018-50.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of Old Kentucky Street right-of-way located from the intersection of East Fourth Avenue to approximately 700 feet west of the intersection of Kentucky Street and Louisville Road and West Riverview Drive.
So moved.
Okay.
Perigin, second by Nash. This is the second reading of an ordinance which appeared in front of the Planning Commission with the unanimous vote to recommend this. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-51.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing a total of approximately 6.58 acres of property located at 618 Lover's Lane, with property presently owned by Preparo Two Bowling Green LLC, and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits, and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Second reading of, I forget the name of the...
Arcadia.
Arcadia Assisted Living Facility property. We're glad they've chosen to be a part of our community. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2019, number one.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Drake Bishop, Abby Cassidy, Victoria Connor, Landon Miller, Jackson Price, Austin Richardson, and Ryan Talent to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Dinning. Mr. Maslow.
We have a group of seven here with us tonight for probationary appointments to the Police Department. I'd like to ask Aaron Holsey, our HR Director, to come make the recommendation.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to recommend the appointment of seven police officers. Currently, the Police Department is eight short of budgeted compliments, so this gets us really close. The Human Resources and Police Departments conduct an extensive entry-level application testing process twice a year. The most recent cycle started in July of 2018, and interviews were completed in December. Brief summary of our recruitment process. We received 151 applications, which is 54 more applicants than the second cycle of 2017, and 31 more applicants than the first cycle of 2018. Thirty-eight candidates showed to the POP Fitness Test and to take the PAI Personality Assessment Inventory. Thirty-four passed the POP's Fitness Test. Eighteen were scheduled for the Polygraph and Psychological Evaluation. Sixteen applicants had the background checks completed. Eleven applicants were interviewed, including a certified officer that was appointed in October of 2018. And seven additional candidates are being recommended for appointment tonight. One member of the Workforce Recruitment Outreach Committee participated in all the interviews, which included representatives of the Police and the Human Resources Department. If you want to stand as I call your name, Victoria Connor, Abby Cassidy, Drake Bishop, Ryan Talent, Austin Richardson, Landon Miller, and Jackson Price.
In here, gentlemen. Understand that you have already been interrogated to find out which high school you went to, and none of you passed, so that's okay. But we're glad to have you with us. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you. You guys are welcome to slip out if you want to, unless you just want to stay around and watch us. Thanks. Municipal Order 2019-12, or, excuse me, two.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Nicholas Lawhan to the position of Environmental Technician in the Public Works Department.
Moved. Second.
Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. Maslow?
It's a position we've been in search of for a while, environmental technician. And Aaron is here again to present to you our final candidate for recommendation. Aaron?
The environmental technician is a new position with the FY 2019 budget. The purpose of the environmental technician is to use hydraulic skills, analysis of data, and problem-solving to help reduce non-point source pollution and flooding. Some responsibilities include utilizing data to determine surface and subsurface flow characteristics, conduct water monitoring operations, evaluate the effectiveness of stormwater best management practices, aid in the development of post-construction master planning, perform field analysis, and review subdivision and development plans. Some requirements of the position are a bachelor's degree in hydrology, environmental science or related field, at least six months of related technical experience, and carst hydrology experience is preferred. The position was posted, and the city received 30 applicants. After a review of resumes, five applicants were selected for interview. One did back out the evening before. The interview panel consisted of Greg Meredith, Chad Doherty, Matt Powell from Public Works, and myself from Human Resources. And I am recommending the appointment of Nicholas Lawhan. Nicholas currently works for the Kentucky Department of Natural Resources as an environmental scientist, where he compiles hydraulic impact analysis of watersheds within the eastern and western Kentucky coalfields to document the potential hydraulic consequences of proposed coal mining. Prior to this job, he worked for the Lost River Cave as a tour guide supervisor. While he was working at Lost River Cave, he was completing his Master of Science degree from WKU in geoscience with a hydrology and geomorphology track. Nick also graduated from WKU with his Bachelor of Science degree in geography with an environment and sustainable development track. Just recently, Nick also received his professional geologist certification. Nick's education background, current work experience, and certification makes him a highly qualified candidate for this role, and we're very excited to have him join the city of Bowling Green. Nick?
In here. Congratulations. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you. You are welcome to slip out as well. Municipal Order 2019-3.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Donald Butler and appointments of Malcolm Cherry, Vernetta Douglas, Philip Parsons, and Glenn Skaggs to the Bowling Green Warren Kelly Military Liaison Board.
So moved.
Okay.
Perigin, second by Nash. This is a reactivation of the Military Liaison Board, which kind of went into dormancy for a few years. So we're glad to see that they're excited about reestablishing their mandate, and these are all recommendations from within the military community. I don't know each of them, so if you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-4.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-38 for Southwest Parkway Connector Professional Services from American Engineers Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky in the amount of $228,749.
Moved. Second.
Nash, second by Perigin. Ms. Maslow?
As most of you all probably know, we've been working on a connector road from Russellville Road to the back of the South Industrial Park. We struck a deal with the state under a memorandum of agreement to fund the design, utility relocation, and any right-of-way acquisition for this piece of road. We came to an agreement of $680,000 that would be reimbursed to us. And so we executed the memorandum of agreement. We went out and requested proposals. We got seven proposals back. And the way this thing works is the state gives us criteria to evaluate and await these proposals. So they were weighted on the following criteria of approach and procedures, experience, performance, their project schedule, and just their familiarity with the project location. American Engineers, Inc. was judged to be the best candidate for this job. There was an evaluation committee put together here with our Public Works Department, and AEI is also a pre-qualified firm with the KTC in respect to their roadway design, traffic engineering, and traffic planning. So we selected them, and then the next step was to negotiate a price, and that negotiated fee came down to $228,749 for this project. And again, this includes all of the design, any further right-of-way acquisition, and utility relocation, all that type work in the scope of this project. So we are asking for your approval to execute and move forward with American Engineers for this job. We have, as you know, $680,000 for this piece of the project. Some more of that will be used for other stuff with right-of-way and some other things we run into, but we thought the $228,749 was a pretty good price for getting this project kick-started. And once we get this phase completed, there will be another round of negotiation and another memorandum of agreement, is my understanding, to complete the rest of this project. Greg Meredith here, if you have any questions on this.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to clarify one thing on this project. This is really a safety issue, correct?
Right.
I mean, it's an egress out of the industrial park, so that people, when there's a train coming through there, or maybe a fire truck needs to come in, or an ambulance or something like that can actually get in another way.
This will connect to Cove Way, so it'd be a little roundabout connector to Cove Way and give another way in and out of the transpark via Russellville Road.
Just wanted to let folks know that it wasn't, you know, it's a real reason.
Right.
It's a valid reason to have to spend this money on that.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-1.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.11 acre from RM4 multifamily residential to OPC office professional commercial located at 640 East Third Avenue, presently owned by Gilbert Barbie Moore and McElvoy PSC, doing business as Graves-Gilbert Clinic.
So moved.
Motion by Dinning, second by Perigin. This is a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning to rezone the old church building and Graves-Gilbert's parking lot. Any comments or questions?
I have one question. Is this property in, oh, hi, you are here.
I am here.
Is this property located in the Shake Rag Historical District?
No. The Shake Rag National Historic District starts about a block and a half to the northwest from this property, so it's outside of that.
And one more question. When I looked at the aerial, it looks like it's this one property, this church, and it's surrounded by a parking lot. And so it was just kind of an odd configuration with this one building left on the block. So I just was curious of the history of development on that block.
Basically, as you've stated, it's the last piece that Graves-Gilbert has not bought at this point. They now own that. It's the last use, I believe, is the third and Park Church of Christ, which has since closed, and then Graves-Gilbert purchased that. At the public hearing, they just stated they're going to use that existing building in its existing form, fix it up a little bit, and use it for storage of just equipment.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019, number five.
Municipal order authorizing and approving amendments to version nine of the 2019 edition of the Bowling Green Police Policy and Procedures Manual.
Still moved.
Okay.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Mazel.
Couple of weeks ago, Ashley sent you a 600-plus-page BGPD policy and procedures manual. I have not personally had the privilege of reading that 600-page document word-for-word, but hope to do that someday, so.
I do.
Anyway, we have some revisions. Actually, Chief has some revisions that we are proposing to make to that manual. And before you in your packet are those revisions. One is the fairly new body-worn camera program that we have put into play. We've added some policies and procedures to govern that program. The other change is some additional wording to your post-critical incident procedures policy. And then, even fairly more new is your new unmanned aircraft systems, your UAS is what they call them, some policies and procedures for that. That is mostly all of the red print that's in your books tonight, and we are proposing this language to be added into the police policies and procedures manual. Chief Hawkins is here, as well as Major Wiley. I think Major Wiley worked on most of the drone and the UAS. Deputy Chief Penny Bowles is also here. I think she worked on a lot of this policies and procedures manual, getting it up to speed, as well as possibly Deputy Chief Delaney. I don't know, but it's probably a tag-team effort, but they're all here to answer your questions if you have any. And we did not put the full 600 pages in your packet, but they can answer any questions you have tonight.
Comments or questions?
I have a few questions.
Who, in what area?
In regards to the UAS section.
Yes.
I'll be happy to do my best to answer those, and if I need help, as Mr. Mazel said, I have plenty in the back of the room.
Thank you so much for entertaining my questions, because, you know, this use of drones is a new technology in police work in terms of the public. I just have a few questions just to learn myself about how a police force would use this technology. My first is, is there any circumstance in which weapons or other equipment, other than a video camera, would be attached to the UAS?
On the equipment that we use, it's only capable of mounting a camera or lighting, so there is no option to mount anything other than that on our systems.
Okay. In section 4.14.5.5, the last paragraph uses the term residential property. And I'm just curious about the term residential property instead of private property. And so, just wanting to clarify, does this mean a warrant will not be required for a UAS to be used over a non-residential that's still private property?
I think I gave you a long, drawn-out response on email today that I will try to shorten in this meeting this evening, but what it amounts to is, the Fourth Amendment is very protective of people's homes, of their persons, and of their papers, as the legal language would say. But over the many, many years, there's been a lot of case law, a lot of interpretation of what the Fourth Amendment is and what it means. And Fourth Amendment does not protect you in a lot of cases, right? If you're in a public arena, for instance, if you're in this commission chamber, we can all be videotaped, we can all be audiotaped. There is no prohibition or restriction from that because there is no expectation of privacy in a public setting. And that could include places that are even private property but publicly accessible, like a mall, or a school, or those kinds of things. And so, there's a number of places that warrants aren't required just because they're either public purview, or they're in a publicly accessible private property. An amusement park is an example of that. And so, there are cases, obviously, when search warrants would be required under the law, under the Fourth Amendment, and by all the standards of law enforcement and our courts, but there are many cases that it would not be required either. I hope that answers your question, but I guess in short, a warrant would not be required in every case.
The, in section 4.14.5.5.1, in the second paragraph, it states that no greater intrusion on private interests, and it goes on and ends with "in accordance with the law." To which law regarding privacy is this referring?
Privacy is always dealing with the Fourth Amendment, right? That is the foundational issue of privacy for any citizen in the United States is the Fourth Amendment. And all of the court cases that have had rulings related to that over the years, some apply to this case, or apply to UAS, some do not, but those are the laws we're talking about when we talk about privacy.
And in this document, it talks about how you're going to retain all of the video footage that you record. And so, if there's a person who is uninvolved in the crime that you're investigating, what happens to the video footage of people who are maybe uninvolved in what you're investigating?
If we're legally capturing video, and those cameras do, and they could be doing it in a public place, all the video that's captured is stored. By our policy, we retain all of that video for a period of time. That's governed by Kentucky laws, also governed by our policy. But there is no effort to do anything with that video until it is requested for use for somebody's purpose. That could be through the open records request process, that could be through the court systems process if it's related to a criminal investigation and that sort of thing, or even a civil court case. But if it's an open records request, there's Kentucky revised statute that guides what we can do and what we should do with that video, and that's chapter 61, and that chapter will give us some guidelines. And we do have the ability, under certain circumstances, to redact for privacy reasons some content of that video before release. But as long as it's in our possession, we do nothing with it to alter it. We can only respond to that request, and if the court systems ask for it, we don't do any redaction at all. We provide that in full scope.
In section 4.14.5.5.1, BLIT 3, it states random surveillance will not occur, but then you mentioned in our email that it might have been a typo there, so I wasn't sure if that was going to be amended for our reading tonight.
We will correct that. As a matter of fact, I copied the responses to yours to all of the commissioners, so they're aware that there is a typo that we will make that change to. And if you approve this policy tonight, that change, that typo, will be corrected as part of this approval.
And will the recordings and the handling of the use of the UAS be subject to audit? And then, what is the accountability structure to ensure that the UAS are in compliance with the policies and procedures that you've laid out in this manual?
And I think that's an important component of this, only because it's new technology, but it's also a new unit that we have stood up in the last year. Every mission requires an after-action report, so there is a report done to document all of the actions taken by the UAS unit at the time. Typically, that's a minimum of a three-person operation. There's, I could go into it, but there's a scene supervisor, and then there's two actual pilots that have to fly and/or observe. So, there's three people involved in those incidents. There's a report to document all that they do. There's a supervisor over that unit that then has to review their actions to make sure they're in compliance with policy. And I think I mentioned to you, the city does have an independent auditor that can audit any component of the city government operation, and she can, at her request through the city manager, the city manager can approve an audit of that process at any time. So, we do have some independent, outside of the police department auditing capacity inside the city.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if there's a question for you or for Ashley, but because this is a new technology, and also because part of this amendment has to do with body-worn cameras, which is a topic issue, what is the way that the public can learn more about these changes in our policy manual before our final reading, so that they may have a chance to ask any questions before?
If Ashley, you want me to try to answer that first? All the documents that are provided to you all, which is done the week before the commission meeting, typically on Tuesday, all of those become public records, and those are available for review by anybody in the public. I think there's going to be some controls on that. You can't take it with you, obviously, but I think you can make copies if you're interested in parts of that. So, it is a public document available for public review. I'll speak for Ashley, but I think that occurs on Thursday afternoon, the week before the commission meeting, and I think that those documents are available for review after that until the commission meeting. And just as a side note, this policy in total appears on our website. It's a published document that anybody can review, or certainly Ashley has it. We would provide a copy or a portion of any part of the document anybody would like to review, so it's always available.
But not these amendments yet?
They are. As of last Thursday, these amendments were available to review by the public.
But I mean, they're not the one that's on your website.
Not until you approve them.
Right. So, then, but right now, anyone could come down and request from you, Ashley, to get a copy, and then you could make a copy of one?
Right. And once this becomes a public document, it goes attached with this municipal order, so it will always be a part of the official record. So, if they were to come in and ask for this, it is available for anyone through an open record process.
But I mean, just in the next two weeks before this becomes final?
Oh, absolutely.
The process would be they come down?
They would get a redacted version, just like you've seen.
Okay. And is, they need to come down and ask for it in person, or can it also be emailed?
Based on the state statute regulations, it could be, as long as it's in writing. So, it could be through me personally, through the clerk's office, or through email. We have that available online as well in a form. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being willing to.
This will be effective after tonight, once approved.
Yeah. Well, we'll publish this as quickly as possible. It'll be available for public review in a couple of days. Yep. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019, number six.
Municipal order accepting donation of a lot in the Kentucky Trimodal Transpark for site of future fire station and authorizing the execution of a deed and partial cancellation of lease and ground lease.
Still moved.
Okay.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Mazel.
Chief Coulson and others have been working with the ITA staff and board on helping us find a good parcel of land on that side of town, and we have found that land that we like and that they are willing to give us in the transpark. It's about an acre and a half, and it sits on 6880. And so, before you tonight, this is, anytime we, anytime the ITA gives away land or sells it for less than $25,000, as part of the requirement from long ago, the city and county have to prove it. So, we're bringing this to you tonight to prove your own receipt of the land, basically. And the county fiscal court will also have to approve this transaction, but Jean's been working on the deed, getting it ready, and I think we're ready to go on this thing. And so, what happens is, the ITA, when we did the geo-bonds, the city had a lease on that land, and as part of this municipal order, we are also releasing that or canceling that lease on that land that we had as part of the bond issue. We had a ground lease and sort of a lease back, so we're undoing that just for this acre and a half parcel on 6880. Chief Coulson's here. If you have any questions on the land, it's nice and flat, nice and square, sits at a really good location adjacent to 31W, the light at 31W and 68. And so, we're more than happy to get this piece of land for future use. Don't know when we'll pull the trigger on it, but it's nice to get it nailed down, and we really appreciate the work of Meredith Rosansky and Ron Bunch at the Chamber and ITA for working with us on this and getting this done. So, bring for you tonight for approval.
Comments or questions?
I'll say, as a member of that board, that that's another economic development tool for us to make that park out there a little more attractive, and I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful addition for our fire department, but also for an economic development reason. There wasn't any hesitation on that.
And I'll give Brent Childers a little bit of credit. He was, he helped Jason out, just a little bit, right, Jason?
He's up here crying.[1496.01][1496.01][laughter]
But it is free, and so, that's, we're saving a lot of money here, thanks to the ITA, so.
Have you ever seen such a big boy pout so much?[1509.33][1509.33][laughter]
Give him a little love every now and then.
Please call the roll, quick, quickly.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019, number seven.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Cannon Automotive Solutions, Bowling Green, Incorporated.
Still moved.
Motion by, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
We've actually got two incentives to, two incentive credits to bring to you here tonight, and both of them are good projects, and I'm going to turn it over to Katie Schaller Ward, our CFO, to present these to you.
The first one is with Cannon Automotive Solutions, and if you recall, about back in August, we had just approved another project with Cannon, so this is an additional project on top of that, where they're expanding their location in the Kentucky Transpark. This was discussed by the job development employee, I'm sorry, Job Development Incentive Program Committee back in early December. And this project will create 20 new jobs. It has an estimated $10 million investment, capital investment. The 1% withholding credit that the company would receive is estimated to be worth approximately 900, I'm sorry, $99,260 over the 10-year period. The city matches the state's 3%, we provide 1%, and it's for 10 years.
Comments or que-
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019, number eight.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Holly Performance Products, Incorporated.
Still moved.
Okay.
Paragon, second.
This project was also discussed at the early December JDIP committee meeting. Holly Performance is looking to create an additional 134 new jobs. They're expanding their business. It is not going to be on the Russellville Road location, it will be in a separate location, I believe, out Louisville Road, so it'll be additional facility that they'll be moving into. Their total capital investment is about $10.2 million. The 1% credit that the city would be providing is estimated to be worth approximately $537,255 over the 10-year period. We also had an additional project with Holly back in 2014 that created, I think, around 100 jobs for that one as well, and that one is just about to go active with the city and start receiving their credit at this point.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Set them on our agenda, is public comments. If anyone has a comment to make for the city commission, this would be the time. We'd ask you to step to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Jennifer Molen. I think BG Electric, if they don't like somebody, they'll turn their electricity off. What do you say that, mayor? And don't you think that's kind of prejudice? And I don't understand how BG Electric gets away with prejudice, you know? I don't understand it. Because you pay the bills, you should get electricity, but if they don't like you, they turn it off. Why is that, mayor? You're on the council. Why is that? I'm just asking, mayor, just simple question, you're on the council.
This is your three minutes for public comments that you're welcome to make.
Okay, you're right. Okay, better transportation, and, um, better transportation, life scales, put more money in programs that not going to affect the government shutdown, and the Fairness Act. The Fairness Act. It doesn't make sense why you won't pass the Fairness Act. And it makes sense because I know why. Because-
Because you think it's okay to turn somebody's electricity off if they don't like you. So maybe that's why you won't pass the Fairness Act. And the Fairness Act is, should be passed. But they think that somebody deserves the no electricity because they're fight for the Fairness Act? Is that right, Mayor? Now, I don't understand that. You stand up in this town, they destroy you, and you're going to let that happen? And that's what I don't understand. You are the mayor of this town. You know? And when you called the fairness people ignorant, no wonder God's mad, you know? And God's, I'm here for God, saying enough is enough, Mayor. And I hope you do turn my electricity off. I'm going to stand living without electricity and then pay my bill two weeks, then I might sue you.
Got to get the sheet, I think. Mr. LaSueur, are you next? Come on up.
My name is Jack LaSueur, and I have been a proud resident of Bowling Green for almost 14 years now. And I'm also a proud member of the Bowling Green LGBTQ community. The last time I spoke to you, excuse me, was in 2017, where I asked you all to enact a fairness ordinance. I'm here again tonight to do the same. At this point, I honestly believed that the commission would have taken up this issue and at least brought it before a discussion. But you haven't, and that really disappoints me as a resident of Bowling Green. I believe that several of you think it is not the responsibility of our local government to take up issues like fairness, and I could not disagree with you more. I believe that these grassroots legislations that we can enact help to inspire our legislators on the state and even the federal level to look at what small communities are doing, and then take that and create wider legislation that can protect, you know, people like me, like our LGBTQ residents. If you look across the states, from our smallest towns to our largest cities, you will see that they are enacting these fairness ordinances across the state. And I think it is really important for Bowling Green, not only to show your constituents, for you all, not only to show your constituents that you care to enact protections in employment and in housing for our LGBTQ members, but also let's show Frankfurt and let's show Washington that, yes, we are a community, we are joining with the rest of the cities in Kentucky, to show that we care about our LGBTQ members. So let's make 2019 the year that we take this up. Let's at least bring it up for a discussion. There are so many things going on in our local, in our local government, to me, that mirror what's going on in the larger national scene. This stalemate has got to end. We need to talk about these issues. Please bring it up, and let's have a discussion at least about it. Thank you.
Able to remind people at the end of the meeting to go sign the form if they wanted to speak. Did I miss anyone that wanted to speak?
I'd like to add one thing. When Bowling Green was recognized by Time Magazine as being one of the ideal places to live in the United States, Mr. LaSueur was in the picture that appeared in the magazine. Many people were confused, they didn't know where the picture came from. I was one of those people. Jack was kind enough to tell me through social media that it was him, and it was taken right here in Bowling Green. And since Jack came to tonight's meeting, I thought it worth recognizing that he represented the city of Bowling Green as one of the, as being one of the greatest places to live by mere photo in the magazine.
Wonderful job at the Arboretum to attract that, especially not just local, but out-of-town people to our community to see what they have, what Mr. Downing has done out there. So thank you for your work with that.
I have one question. So in my reading of the procedures for the city commission meetings, there was some wording around if someone who makes a public comment, let us know it can be a part of the official minutes of the meeting. Is that correct in my reading that? I just wanted to check and make sure we didn't need to offer that to Mr. LaSueur if he would like his, what he read here, or what he said to be traded.
All remains are videotaped, and we keep those perpetuity.
Right, but they don't list in the minutes in which we approve later, right? The public comments, they are? Okay.
List their names, if that's what you're asking.
Well, it just listed specifically if they would like to submit what they have said in writing, it can be a part of the official record in writing from the meeting. And so I just wanted to check in on that, if he would like that to be the--
Yeah, we summarize. I'm not sure if someone asks, I would defer to Gene on that. If someone has provided something to actually put as part of the minutes, I don't, we would do that if Gene says that's the right thing to do.
I guess I'm trying to get, because I'm not real sure I read the minutes, but I don't think we summarize the public comments in the minutes. Is that a question you would like?
We do. Well--
I should read them often.
No, I just mean that if someone wanted, you know, because it is public records, someone can go back and see what are the comments that were made about a particular topic over time. You know, if someone wanted to say, I would like my full comment to be submitted for the public record, I just wanted to just let him know that he could do that if he'd like.
And for the most part, we try to summarize in every, every part of something they said. But obviously, if there's, if there's more that needs to be included, someone could probably definitely ask to do that, and we will do whatever we can to accommodate that.
I would like to make one more comment about public comments, if I may. I feel that all future public comments need to be made in a respectful manner. I think we're getting away from the respectful demeanor and manner in which the public will address this board, which is elected by the citizens of this city. And so I would ask that all future public comments be more respectful. The gentlemen did a great job tonight. Most of them do, but there are cases where there is berating of city officials, and I think that is unnecessary and uncalled for, and very disrespectful to you all that have been elected by your constituents of this city. So I would ask that going forward, public comments be more respectful and more congenial, and we make that attempt if the public will oblige that. Thank you.
Comments? Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 5, 2019. Thank you for tuning in.